Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Recommendations to the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on June fifth, two thousand and twenty four, at ten thirty A M. And I try to tell people in the crowd, ten thirty A M. is an approximate time for reviewing planning items. And they review them from there so that you can end up there a lot longer than ten thirty. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you are an applicant or an agent, you do not need to fill out a speaker request form. Roll call. Kevin B. is the only member, and he may be late. He indicated he'll still try to get here. First item on the agenda is approval of May tenth, two thousand and twenty four minutes. And I would assume that all the members of the Planning Commission that are present have had an opportunity to review the agenda and the submission in our packet. If so, the Chair would address a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the May tenth, two thousand and twenty four minutes of the Planning Commission discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item number two is approval of the agenda. Again, I assume that you've had an opportunity to review the agenda that is submitted in your packet. If so, Chair would address a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of Pennington County Planning Commission. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Who's, Cody, you doing the consent this morning? Good morning.
Cody Stack of Vanilla Planner. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Agenda item four is conditional use permanent review, C U R fifteen ten of the Krebs Partnership LLC, Donald Krebs. It's to review a home occupation on the subject property to use a detached garage for the purpose of buying, repairing, and selling vehicles, not intended to be a car lot. Staff's recommendation is approval of conditional use permit review, C U R fifteen ten with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit, C U R seventeen dash twelve, Pamela Phillips. It's to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence on the subject property. Staff recommends to end conditional use permits, C U R seventeen dash twenty-two. Item number six is conditional use permit review, C U R twenty dash eleven, Andre Olson, to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Staff's recommendation is to, um, is approval of conditional use permit review, C U R twenty dash eleven with conditions. Item number seven is condition, conditional use permanent review, C U R twenty-one dash eighteen, Lowell Cobb, to review a temporary campground slash assembly, assembly of people on the subject property during the month of July. Staff's recommendation is to approve conditional use permit review, C U R twenty-one dash eighteen with conditions. Number eight is conditional use review, C U R one dash thirty-four, William Brackett, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. Staff's recommendation is to approve conditional use permit review, C U R one dash thirty-four with conditions. Number nine is conditional use permanent review, C U R twenty-one dash thirty-nine, Pauline Carol Neiman, to review recreational vehicle, vehicle park. Staff recommends to approve conditional use permit review, C U R twenty-one dash thirty-nine with conditions. Uh, the number ten is conditionally use permit review, C U R twenty-one dash forty-two, Cal S D L C, Tina Roberts, to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, C U R twenty-one dash forty-two with conditions. Item number eleven is condition use permit review, C U R twenty-two dash zero-two, William and Mavis Jeffrey, to review a multifamily residence on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit reviews, C U R twenty-two dash zero-two with conditions. Well, number twelve is condition use permanent review, C U R twenty-two dash zero-nine, David and Mary Grover, to review living in a pole barn slash shop building while building a single-family residence on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, C U R twenty-two dash zero-nine with conditions. Item number thirteen is condition use permits, C U R twenty-three dash twelve, recent, uh, Jaden Chambers, to review a vacation home rental in the subject property. Staff recommends approval of condition use permit review, C U R twenty-three dash twelve with conditions. Uh, number, item fourteen is condition use permit review, C U R twenty-three dash thirteen, Neil and Terry Faust, to review living in existing residents while building a single-family residence. Staff recommends approval of condition use permit review, C U R twenty-three dash thirteen with conditions. And item number fifteen is minor planning unit development amendment review, P U R twenty-two dash zero-nine, Hart Ranch Camping Resort Club, uh, Tim Schnubble, uh, to review the existing Hart Ranch planning unit development to allow a warehouse to be utilized as an event center. Uh, staff recommends approval of minor planning unit development amendment review, P U R twenty-two dash zero-nine with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Give you a second.
We're good.
All right, that's, you might know Brittany Bale on you when you got this long one today.
Yeah.
She got you. Um, does the staff have any items they would like pulled this morning?
No.
What about the Commission?
Just eleven.
Item number eleven. All right, and I'd like item number five pulled just so that we can get a little explanation on the garages. Anybody from the audience that would like to have an item pulled for discussion? We do vote on these with one vote, and they will pass. That's why they're all read together as one, and there will be a motion made to approve the consent agenda. Okay, very good. Chair, address a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
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 Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with items number four and item number eleven pulled for discussion.
Four or five?
Five.
A five, sorry. I had four circled too, but we corrected that one before the meeting, didn't we, Mike?
Yep.
Thank you. Five and eleven, discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Good morning, Megan.
Good morning.
I just have, oh, the garages, if you look at the picture, uh, so that we don't, uh, kill this with a lot of conversation, the picture from the air shows, what do you call that rabbit? A map shows that both of the, um, garages are actually within that easement. And I had some concerns about that we're addressing one, but not the other. Go ahead.
Um, so we're actually looking at, they will need to plot through the city of Rapid City, but we're looking at combining these lots and doing a caregiver's residence, um, rather than try to move either of the structures. Um, we're in favor of it, and the applicant is in favor of it also.
Okay, and you don't have any problem of that moving through, uh, that it'll be resolved? So what would I say to the benefit of both the property owners in the county that this is not going to continue to be a problem?
No, this won't continue to be a problem.
Okay. And, and Brittany indicated the same to me, so I would move we go ahead and approve number five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item number five, which is conditional use review, one seven dash two-two with, I guess there isn't any condition.
Yep, it's, it's recommended to end.
Excuse me?
It's recommended to end, so the conditional use permit is actually for the single wide mobile home, which is now an allowed use, right?
I understand.
Yep.
Thank you. Per staff's recommendation to end conditional use permit, C U one seven dash two-two. Now, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to, uh, end per staff's recommendation, conditional use permit, C U one seven dash two-two. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on to item number eleven.
Number eleven, a simple thing, on multifamily, what about rentals on this thing? I don't see anything about any rentals. This could just be long-term rentals?
Uh, yeah, so Cody Stack of Vanilla Planner, um, multifamily dwellings could be long-term rentals. Uh, they're allowed to be, uh, under the, the current ordinance, uh, they're not allowed to be. However, the Board of Commissioners just passed the new V H R resident or V H R ordinance that would allow this to be a, a short-term rental.
That's what I was wondering, okay, so that would fall under the new one then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That, that was the only thing I had, Mr. Chair.
Seeing that, would someone like to make a motion to address item number eleven?
Right, I'd make a motion to, uh, pass number item eleven, C U R twenty-two, twenty-two dash O two.
Second.
Moved and seconded to prove, per staff's recommendation, C U R two-two dash O two with seven conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried on to item number fourteen. Fifty?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty? Boy, I'm way, my, my marker's way off, isn't it? Sorry. I tried to mark these ahead to be a good operator here, but I wasn't. All right, on to item number sixteen, thank you.
Uh, Cody Stack of Vanilla Planner, item sixteen is condition use permit, C O C U twenty-four dash thirteen. It's to allow a tattoo shop to be located on the subject property, the applicant landowner is Jeff Devaney. I do believe he is in the audience if there are any questions. Uh, location of the property is two three eight five five highway three eighty-five. Um, current zoning is highway service district with an existing land use of commercial retail shops. Uh, access is off highway three eighty-five, and there is a special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, staff has been recommended to continue condition use permit, C O C U twenty-four dash zero zero one three. As there are building permits and operating license that have not been obtained for the property.
Questions for Cody? When you're reviewing these, Cody, I guess I've got one. Uh, isn't there also, um, uh, like a drive-up building that's eventually supposed to become some type of shop or something? I assumed a coffee shop or something.
I believe there's a building permit for a, a drive-up coffee shop.
Gotta be getting a little old too, doesn't it? It's been sitting there for quite some time.
Yeah, that, I'm not sure, i- if they have a proper permit for it, uh, which they do have a building permit for it, if it's not operational, they have two years to complete it per building permit.
Okay, and then my second thing is, is I did notice his operator with his, uh, off-road vehicles and his rental cars. Um, if I remember right, we approved that to, uh, be looked at in another year. We gave him one more year to find some property, is that correct?
Correct, yes, and that would have been on this agenda item, but when we did, when we reviewed it, there were some issues with, uh, not meeting conditions. Uh, so staff is going to continue it anyway, so we're just working with the applicant.
Putting it together with this.
Yep, so.
Any other questions for Cody? Anyone here to speak on this from the audience today? Please introduce yourself and then go on from there.
Okay, Jeff Devaney, I'm the landowner. On the, with convicted tattoos, I had no idea, I was totally confused that it was even needed for a conditional use permit. It's a retail sales building, that's what the tattoo is. Um, I received a letter, I believe on a Friday, saying that I was in violation, this was my first notice. I went in the following day, uh, Monday, I believe it was, and they told me I had to do a conditional use permit, everything else. Then I was also had a penalty of like four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars because I was in violation. Now, I received my first notice, and it wasn't that they had sent me two or three. I came in right away, but yet I still received a penalty. I don't quite understand why I would receive a penalty when I address the situation with the permit. But then I'm also confused not knowing who needs a conditional use permit and who doesn't. Because with it being highway service, it's retail sales, that's what a tattoo shop is doing. It's retail, so I, I had no idea that I was even in violation. I was confused.
Okay, questions from Mr. Devaney? I've got some. If you didn't know that, what did you have in that location before?
A gym.
Did you get a building permit for that?
No. A conditional use permit or building?
Building permit.
Building, uh.
Your building was originally approved as a, as a totally unpartitioned or set up building?
Right, three different.
You requested that, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, so you would assume to finish out the building, you'd have to have some building permits.
Right, which I, I did originally, I think, let's see, I built that like eight years ago, I believe.
Okay, and there was a T-shirt shop already in it, wasn't it?
Yes, they were in there for six years.
Mm-hmm. What about the conditional use permit for used car and an off-road vehicle? You didn't think you needed one that for that either?
I didn't, but that, uh, the Mike with team, I told him at the time, if there's anything needed, you're going to be responsible for it. I said, I can't see it, but, and then I think within about six weeks after them opening up for business, I received a letter, which then I gave to Mike with team.
Okay, and you're a contractor?
I, what, my son and I, yes. I kind of too damn old for that now.
You can't review some of these on the internet or by phone?
What's that?
You can't review some of these things and head them off by the internet or by phone? You have to wait to get a letter?
I didn't even, I didn't know I was in violation.
Did you check? Before you made the lease and rented, you just decided, or what, how do you, how do you ascertain?
Maybe it's my fault, I assumed that highway service is retail, retail, it's highway service. Um, I did, I did not realize their stipulations as far as what is concerned retail and what isn't.
All I'm trying to point out is some of these things have been done in, in a atmosphere to work with you. When that building was put up, it was your request that it be with a building permit that was left with nothing inside. That's way back when it happened, is that correct? You had a building that burned and you were replacing it with a new building. And you had not, nothing but a wide open building, you were paying a building permit on.
No, the building permit that I got was for three separate.
Bays?
Pardon?
Three separate bays?
Yes.
Correct, but they were empty, is that correct? There was no other construction done in there?
Not knowing who was going in.
Wide open building.
Except there was two walls.
But that was what you bought a permit for? Other, well, yes, partition walls, okay, I'll go along with that. But that's what you paid your permit for, so many square feet, partition walls, rough walls.
That is correct.
As a contractor, wouldn't you make an assumption that there's some other requirements to fill the space?
I mean, if I, if it's completed inside, not knowing what's going in, I mean.
But it's not completed inside, it's wide open space with a partition wall, and you're a contractor.
Right.
You'd do this every day.
Yeah, I did at one time, not anymore, that is correct.
So you have a basis to kind of review what you, you did for a living versus what's going on here. I'm just suggesting you're getting a little out on the thing. You even said it was probably your fault, well, that's why you have a penalty. It is your fault until you show otherwise that you made an attempt to do these things.
I, I'm at fault for not getting the conditional use permit for a business to go in?
You're the property owner.
Yes.
We don't do the lease or the rent with your tenants.
I understand, but, so, I mean, like when the T-shirt place went in.
Okay.
Okay, there was, I, I'm assuming no violation there because I never received it.
You didn't get a building permit for them to set up their business. It was an open space when they started. But there was a violation.
You're, okay, you're confusing me, I guess, when I built the building, there was three different retail sales.
Segments of the building, divided off segments.
Right. I finished the end.
Can I stop you? Were the segments in any way, was there a bathroom, was there plumbing, was there lighting, was there anything in those?
Yes, there, there was bathrooms.
Maybe, there was a bathroom, a separate?
There's bathrooms, there's the mop sinks, there's electrical, everything was done and went through inspection.
And those were covered under your original permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't read it that way, I, the building permit that I saw that was issued was for those partitions in a wide open building in there. Whether or not you installed it, and we didn't inspect at that time as well, we do now.
I was going to say, I, I mean, I had electrical inspectors in there, I didn't do the wiring, but Sam Peters and Hill Titty did. He went through the inspection, the plumbers went through the inspections throughout every one of those.
Jeff, I, I don't mean to mix words, but I don't think there was outlets put in duplexes and whatnot and electrical at the time you got your building permit for your initial building. It was put in later to meet the needs of your, your lessy or your renter.
Okay, all, all I know is before anyone even moved into them, they were complete, they were, there was outlets in there, there was lighting, there was plumbing, bathrooms, air conditioning, everything, everything was inspected.
I guess this will all shake out then. I'm not going to waste any more of your time or, or sit here and belittle a problem, but I don't believe that was the case. And I don't believe that was the case for the people that initially inspected that building and when you bought your permit. Not from what I read from, from the initial thing, and I was around then.
Yeah, okay.
And I do believe as a contractor, you have more responsibility to advise your renters or lessies when they, there's conditions that need to be. Man, you, you understand a lot of them, you read, you build new things or have built new things. Or your son has, is your son running this building now, is that the case?
He has his own business.
Okay. Anyway, well, I'll leave, in other words, I, I don't think you're without fault here. I'm strongly suggesting that.
Because I didn't get a conditional use permit for convicted.
A number of permits, not just a conditional use permit, a number of permits, and you've skated that so far.
Okay.
Had two other businesses prior to the one we're, we're dealing with here.
So like you're stating, when the T-shirt place went in, they should, that, that should have been a conditional use permit with them going in.
No, that was, no, not at all, but their construction that they did should have had a building permit because it was an empty building, it was an empty stall at that time. Go ahead, Cody. Cody's going to crack me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, Cody Stack of Vanilla Planner, I, I think the confusion is, is you're talking about conditional use permits. When you permitted that new structure, you permitted it as all unfinished space. The floor plan doesn't show any bathrooms or anything in that. It was just for the shell and the walls. When someone came in and actually finished it off, they were supposed to get a building permit for it, and no one's ever gotten a building permit for those. The retail shops really got a building permit for whatever they did inside. They don't need a conditional use permit because that is retail sales and allowed, but they should have got a building permit if they did any work in there. Or, or if you, if you drywalled the whole thing and put bathrooms and plumbing and everything in there, you should have came in and got a permit for it. Because your permit, when you got it, this is all that it shows, it's just all empty and it's unfinished commercial building. So there's nothing finished inside besides you showed the partition walls, but nothing else in there.
Like this is showing the three buildings.
This is just showing, yeah, the walls, there's no bathrooms or anything shown in there. I, I can work with you or, or Brittany can work with you after the meeting, um, to get you into compliance with this, to get the condition use per, permit for this. Um, but I don't know if it's something that we need to hash out up at the, the podium right now.
Why was I, I was told that I had to get everything inspected?
So if you, if you put in, there's unfinished space, like people unfinished, won't finish their basement that has plumbing and electrical in it that needs to be inspected. If you come in here and say it's unfinished, you, you still might have like HVAC, you might have plumbing, you might have electrical that needs to be inspected. But you, if you don't have drywall up, or if you don't have anything else, or bathrooms listed on there, it's just considered unfinished space to us, and that's what you got permitted. You didn't permit anything to like actually finish the inside.
Okay, yeah, because I, I didn't, like I say, I, I had the, the electrician had to get ahold of inspector, the plumbers had to get ahold of plumbing.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, we can work with you after this meeting if you, if you come upstairs, or I can work with Brittany on scheduling a time that we can meet with you.
Cody, can I weigh in though? The, the inspection he's talking about are state, both electrical and plumbing are a state inspection, have nothing to do with the county at this point in time, when, way back when we didn't have an inspection and a building code. This was before then. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept, uh, staff's recommendation and, and, um, continue this.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept staff's recommendation, which I believe is to continue conditional use permit, C O, C U two four dash zero zero one three, um, we usually put a date on it, uh, and Brittany isn't here.
We do, two weeks.
It's June tenth.
June tenth.
June tenth, thank you, that will be in motion, is that acceptable, Mr. Coleman?
It is.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Yeah. Discussion, Mr. Devaney. Go ahead, Cody? There didn't happen to be a building permit for the T-shirt place that they came in and got their own?
No.
Because typically at Vanilla Space, the tenant is going to be the one that does that building permit.
Yeah, and, and that's true. Um, however, the way the ordinance reads is the owner's ultimately responsible for the property.
I was just curious if they happened to have done that, but your records would show by the address.
Yeah, and, and, and all we're trying to do is make sure that that building comes into compliance. Once that building comes into compliance, I don't think there's an issue with the tattoo shop.
Isn't some of that though, Cody, because we're not privileged to the lease or the rental agreements? In other words, it's between the property owner and the people that are doing it. I agree most of the time they come in, but I believe you actually have, uh, have them sign that they are in fact representing or acting as an agent of the property owner.
Yeah.
The tenant, meaning they are acting as your agent to get these things done properly.
But, yeah, we'll, we'll be in contact with you, we'll get a meeting set up, and we'll get it hashed out for.
Anything else you want to say, Jeff, before you?
No, I'm all good.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Any other discussion from the Commission? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried on to item number seventeen.
Uh, item seventeen is condition use permit, C O C U twenty-four dash zero zero one four. It's to allow a recreational vehicle park and overnight equine, equine boarding facility on the subject property. Uh, the applicant landowner is Share LLC. Location of the property is one nine five four eight, uh, two hundred and thirty-ninth street. Uh, involves forty-seven point six eight, six-three acres, current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of, of residential and agriculture. Access is off two thirty-ninth street, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, when approving condition use permits, uh, the ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of the condition use permit application. Uh, those are on the screen. Uh, it does appear that the request would meet all of those requirements. Uh, currently on the property, there is a forty by hundred and twelve farm utility building, a hundred and ten by two hundred and fifty. Uh, currently on the property, there is a forty by hundred and twelve farm utility building, a hundred and ten by two hundred fifty how- horse arena, and a single family residence, and there's an existing onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, this was rather often near department review. Uh, county highway says an approach permit must be filed. And says at this time, two hundred and thirty ninth street may remain a gravel surface. However, the highway department will monitor for traffic conditions and deterioration of the of two hundred and thirty ninth street in the vicinity, and may require a paved surfaces defined by ordinance fourteen standards uh, from livestock guard to Point beyond driveway at the future review of the C P. Uh, the county addressing coordinator said the address would need to be posted, and the county environmental planner, um, said that the applicant's proposing to use holding tanks to meet septic needs. Uh, they are proposing twenty eight R V sites. Each R V site would generate a hundred gallons per day. Uh, they only do obtain approval from D A N R, no other objections were received. Uh, there is a commercial riding stable arena that is currently under an approved conditional use permit. That conditional use permit is C U zero zero twenty. Uh, at the time of the application, holding tanks proposes and means a wastewater treatment. At that time, staff provided feedback that this would not be adequate. And that a system with a drain field approved by the county and state would be necessary. Staff has included that as a condition to address this requirement. Uh, so with that, staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit C O C U twenty four dash zero zero one four with conditions.
Questions for Cody?
Just a little one. Um, it says, uh, would be necessary, the drain field and and that sort of thing. Would one septic tank and drain field work for this whole thing?
Uh, it would depend on the sizing requirements. Um, generally, yes, it just depends on how big they actually build it. Most most of the time when it gets into that big of a system, they'll split it and do like two systems.
Okay.
Um, but if they can get approval for one, they can do one.
Okay, all right, because it, with all the the different sites and everything in addition to that, so, yeah, okay, that's that's all I had.
Anyone else? Questions for Cody? I have a couple. One, eh, we use a ten foot separation. This isn't the first one. We've used ten foot separations and R V sites between these units. And I'm always concerned if a fire starts in one of these ten feet, that even the heat's gonna blister, may set the other one on fire. Is that something a fire marshal can live with?
I believe so. I believe that ten foot requirement actually comes from, um.
Something written?
Yeah, I I don't, I, you know, I can't specifically speak to that, but that's generally what's also done for, uh, like, uh, mobile home parks as well.
I'm just saying, I I think historically you probably did, but I I sure would feel a lot more comfortable with twenty, but I'm not poor person that has to build these things and get them done. And then the last question, it says in their their business, uh, uh, preparation here, it says, oh, on the second page, it goes overnight horse pins to house up to ten horses. We got a lot of R Vs for ten horses, don't we?
It it's actually, it's zoned ag, so they can have as many horses out there as they.
Well, the horses weren't, I was just thinking of setting up for twenty eight, and then with them, eh, aren't you guys still a little bit issues over the, uh, septic?
There there's some, that's what we work with the applicant on. We put those in the conditions of approval, um.
I was just thinking if they could move into it, if they still could have their ten horses, but could live with less sites and move into it, it might help them financially. Uh, make the project more feasible. That was all I was bringing up. Ten horses with twenty eight R Vs just seems like if you had one per R V wouldn't surprise me. You know?
And the the applicants are here too, I believe, if there are any questions for them on like numbers and everything. Um, this is Jason's request.
Oh.
I kind of found out this morning that he had this one, um, so I didn't.
Let you off the hook, because that's the only two questions I had, and and neither one of them really are hill of beans, so. Anything else for Cody? Thank you, Cody. And would the applicant like to come up and address?
Don't.
You don't, certainly not required to, even because Cody threw you on the fire there, but if you'd like to. You have to introduce yourself just for the record, and you can go on from there and.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Jason Hanson. I'm with Bros Engineering. I'm representing, uh, Laney. To the conditions that that were in the staff recommendations, we are in the process, uh, uh, getting D A N R approval. Um, working through the septic design and everything, so, uh, everything should be, uh, in in the works to, uh, to meet the requirements of of obtaining the conditional use permit, so.
Do you think, when I see the ten horses versus the twenty eight sites, in other words, let me ask you that then. Is it something where you could still set up for the twenty eight sites and move in that direction, but not necessarily activate twenty eight? And live with a smaller system to start with that you can add on to?
Um, I'm I'm just the technical guy here, so I'm not the owner per se. I I guess if if Laney, would you want to have any comments on that? This this is Laney, by the way, this is the owner, so.
I'm Laney Shear. Um, so the barn that exists there now, um, it's open, so we're also going to have, you know, barrel racing, a few barrel racings, team ropings, things like that, like other activities in the barn. Um, so we'd like to have the option, you know, for people to be able to stay. Yeah, to be able to stay, and if we did have like a two day event or anything like that, then we'd have the option for somebody to stay. So that's what the.
You've totally answered my question. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Anything else for the applicant? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Chair would address a motion.
I move we approve C zero or C O C U twenty four dash zero zero one four with eighteen conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, C O C U two four dash zero zero one four with eighteen conditions. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We're on to number eighteen.
Uh, Cody's a government planner. Item eighteen is conditional use permit C O C U twenty four dash zero one five. It's to allow caretakers' residents to be located on the subject property. Uh, the applicant and landowner is R and J L L C, Justin Eisenrod is the agent. Uh, he is in the audience if there are any questions. Uh, location of the property is one three five one four, South Highway sixteen, involves nineteen point four two acres. Current zoning is highway service district, uh, existing land use is event centering cabins. Access is off South Highway sixteen, and there's no special flood hazard area or no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the zoning ordinance list seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of the conditional use permit application. Uh, the answer's on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Uh, for number one, a caretaker's residence should not be detrimental or endanger the public, and onsite caretaker should benefit the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Uh, number two, uh, the proposed use should not change the commercial use of the property, and should not have any long-term negative effects. Onsite caretaker would appear to have a positive effect on other properties in the immediate vicinity. Uh, number three, the proposed caretaker's residence should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of the surrounding property in the area. Uh, number four, the subject property has existing, uh, utilities. The onsite wastewater treatment system has already sized, uh, for use as a V H R. Number five, accesses off of the property, access to the property is provided in approved, uh, South Dakota Department of Transportation approach off of South Highway sixteen. And number six, the current zoning is highway service district. Uh, proposed use is allowed with the conditional use permit. And number seven, uh, future land use is highway service district. Again, uh, caretaker's residence is approved, um, with a conditional use permit. Uh, some property history, uh, in twenty nineteen, the Board of Commissioners approved comprehensive plan amendment to change future land use from the property from low density residential to highway service district. Uh, at that same time, the Board of Commissioners approved a rezone, uh, to rezone the property from general agriculture, uh, district to highway service district. Uh, the applicant does have, uh, two current, um, conditional use permits or one conditional use permit, um, which was approved at the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty one Planning Commission meeting. That was for a wedding venue and event center. On the August second, twenty twenty two, uh, the Board of Commissioners approved conditional use permits U nineteen twenty eight to allow an R V park on the subject property. Uh, there was one violation, environmental violation for disturbing more than ten thousand square feet without a stormwater permit. Uh, that was closed in on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. I'm not gonna list all of the buildings that they have in here, but they do have building permits for all the structures that are on the property. And they do have approved wastewater treatment systems. Uh, this was rather often near department review. Uh, county highway said that the dimension should be noted on the site plan as it appears to maintenance shop. Some camper sites and drain fields will be placed within the section line setbacks. Otherwise, the highway department has no comment. Um, staff comments setbacks appear to be met based on the scale drawings included in the onsite wastewater treatment system and building permit. Uh, county addressing coordinator said that an address would need to be posted, and the county environmental planner for septic said that the current system was already sized for the current proposal. Again, the applicant is requesting caretaker's residence be located on the subject property. Uh, staff has received, uh, several letters, um, since the, um, staff report was written. I believe you do have copies of those, uh, opposing this request. Uh, staff finds no significant issue with the applicant's request. This appears to be a benefit and upkeep to the R V park and event center located on the subject property. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit C O C U, uh, twenty four dash zero zero one five with conditions.
Questions for Cody?
One, uh, the plant, do you have that? You bring that up, I've got a question on it. Okay, the yellow, is that where the caretaker's house is going to be on the north side?
I believe so, yes.
Because there's houses all the way around the, I remember this originally when when we went through all this, and and a lot of people came in and were upset about it, and this one's gonna be right up against those houses, I guess, at this point, so. Th- that's the only thing I've got, Mr. Chair.
The other question is for Cody. Thank you, Cody. I assume a number of people, I've got some speaker requests. Before we get to that, I do have an item that was submitted, and I wanted to make sure all the the commission got it from, um, Brian Johnson, dated May twenty two, twenty four. Everybody get them, so that was added to their packet? Okay, I just wanted that on the record, that we did receive that. Uh, I do have two speaker request forms. Don't hesitate if you have something to say. I don't ask people, not that, it would be nice if we had them, but the first one is, um, Merv Guthmiller. You have to introduce yourself for the record, Merv, and you take off from there.
Okay, I'm Merv Guthmiller. I'm, I live at two three seven three eight Pine Haven Drive, in Charlie. I've been there eighteen years. Used to used to ask that all the time.
Yep.
Yeah, what I'd like to, what I want to speak on is the location of that, uh, caretaker's house. Could, could we have an aerial view of that showing the trees and the ravine?
Oh, like a rapid map style picture?
Yeah.
Have you got one of that, Cody?
Doesn't appear so.
I believe there was one in our packet.
Yep. Sorry, it doesn't want to load.
While you're getting that, I believe what's it, plus or minus about three feet is the rapid map?
For lines?
Yeah.
Uh, it varies by location. Some are off, some are off by.
Okay, depending on when the the satellite collect the picture, huh?
Correct, yeah.
All right, very good. Is that all right with you there, Merv?
Thank you, yes. Yes, you can see, uh, my property is is right to the north of the campground, the subject property. Those, uh, four cabins on the left are pretty close to my driveway, like probably thirty feet. Um, my house is it's close, I think you can see it there on the, it's kind of on the north side of the line, more to the right. Um, the proposed caretaker's house is only about sixty eight feet from my property line. It's it's very close. So the ravine, there is a ravine running. Well, you can't quite see that, but there's, there's a drainage ravine running just a little bit south of the boundary between my property and and the, uh, proposed in the campground property. So what I'd like, what I'd like to do now is we have it set up for, to show a video, and the video was Commissioner Drew's asking the developer the question of what what structures and what are you gonna have on the north side of that ravine?
Is this a board of commissioners', uh, picture or a planning commission?
Planning, planning commission.
Planning commission, okay, I just wanted that straight for the record.
Okay.
And, uh, apparently, Gary, you were at that meeting of the planning commission.
I was.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Merv.
So, can we show that video now?
Sure.
Got it set up, okay.
Does anybody have an objection on the commission to reviewing that? Thank you. Go ahead, Merv.
Who hasn't?
All right, there we go. I haven't got any volume yet, though.
Uh, sewage, uh, for that many units and cabins.
Uh, um, do you have my engineer here with?
Let me, let me just go on to a couple more questions because it may all be, uh, relevant to having your engineer. Uh, there's a, uh, drainage area on the north end of that property where you're proposing cabins right there. Uh, so that's a concern as to how you deal with that current drainage ditch, uh, which appears to me to have been there for a long time. Uh, I was out there this spring, and, uh, when I walked that property then, uh, that area appeared to be wet, uh, recognizing this year has been a very wet year, so I don't know if that's abnormal for it or if that's a normal, uh, for it being wet through that area. Uh, also, uh, safety is a concern of mine as to getting in and out, getting turned around to go towards Rapid City, uh, with the units that you're talking about having there, so those are some of the concerns that I have.
Um, the cabins will actually be on, uh, the campground side of that creek.
Pardon me?
Doing, that, the cabins will actually be on the campground side of that creek. They'll be on the highway side of that creek. We will not have anything going over that creek. That that drainage.
Okay, uh, that isn't the way it appears to me, but you may be correct.
Well, uh, everything will be on this side of that of that drainage. And and for the safety of the approach, I, you know, the other, the other two campgrounds that I see on on there that are that are, one is big and the other one is much larger than mine, has to cross Highway sixteen also. They have to merge out there, and they do not have turning lanes. Okay? And and to my knowledge, there there's not been a substantial accident there from what I, from what I've talked to D O T.
That's enough.
Any further questions from?
Okay, the reason, reason I wanted to show that video is, I think, is.
Merv, just a question, that is the part that you wanted to, okay.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yeah, the reason I wanted to show that is it's it's pretty clear that he answered Commissioner Drew's questions by saying there would not be anything on the north side of that drainage, which is where my house is. Okay, and that is where he's proposing to put this caretaker's residence. I don't. I don't understand. I don't, I don't understand how that can even begin to happen, so.
A quick question, looking at that map, that brown, to the lower right of those four cabins, that brown uh, strip, is that the drainage?
No. Oh, I see what you mean. Um, no, well, it's right, it starts right below those cabins. Is that what you mean, that little?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then it goes through the trees? We can't see that.
Yes, yes, it does.
That's what I wondered. There's not a lot of room on the other side of that drainage.
No, no, there isn't.
How do they, how would they get into that house? Uh, go to those cabins and over then?
There's a, they've got a, a road coming. I can't see that either. There's a road coming from the campground, going to the right and going into that house, so.
Merv, it is on another sketch if you want, Cody, you can call that up so that you can point that out. We do have it in our packet and I wanted the audience to know that we have seen that there.
So that drainage goes into that, uh, is that a pond? That blue thing on the right?
Hmm, wait, I'm, oh, I see now, I'm, um. It's really not, there's not a pond down there.
Cody, you're gonna go ahead and divine for the state how the state.
Cody's environmental planner, that's their stormwater control, that's their detention pond as part of their project for their BMPs. They were required to do a detention pond based on their engineering, that's what that is.
Okay, so there, proceed on here. There are three criteria that, that I always see on the planning and zoning staff's list that, that you review. One of them is, is will the location of a house or cabin substantially diminish the value of other property? We've, I and the neighbors in this area have been very much blessed with having nice homes, I would say, high-end homes, assessed at a million and a half and a little bit and down from that, but, and, and, and we have a covenants that does not allow modular homes. And it's for the reason, obviously, to bring down the value of our properties, okay? This proposed house he wants to put in there is a modular house. So I don't, I don't have a number or percentage of how much it would reduce our property, but it's going to be something pretty substantial. And it's, and it's, and also because of where it's located, close to our property. The second, the second one, will the location of the house or the cabin diminish the enjoyment of the surrounding property? There, there are obvious reasons why we purchased three acres or more. Uh, we, we purchased the property for the peace and quietness that we did not enjoy when we lived in town where our houses were close together. So, uh, we, we've enjoyed peace and quietness here for the past eighteen years. Like it to continue. One thing that's, that I don't have on my notes here is that also think about privacy and safety. Right now, we have people walking down our driveway, cars driving in and out because they can't find the campground entrance. And my daughter is disabled, that's why she lives with us. She spends a lot of time outside. Kind of freaks her out to see strangers coming in and out of that place, especially driving or walking. So, so we also have an issue with what I would say is privacy and safety. That's kind of gone out the window. The, the third one that, that's on their list is the proposal should not create offensive odor in films that will constitute a nuisance. I and the neighbors have, we've already experienced waking up in the night with a house full of smoke. And it's not a little bit of smoke, the first time it happened, I thought the house is on fire. It, it's that much, so it's coming from campfires. And this happened, this happened when he wasn't really open for a lot of business yet, just getting started. So it's a serious problem because we have in-floor heat in the house. We got to open our windows at night to get, to get the house cooled down. And my house isn't the only one. You might have some information in the packet, but I know Sarah had the same situation with her house. And she even walked around outside looking for, see if something was burning outside. So that's, so that is a nuisance and the only way that's going to go away is if he stops burning wood in those campfires. Let me tell you a little bit about how things have been going there since, since you approved this on August second, twenty-twenty-two. Right after you approved it, I met with Justin, the developer. And told him my two main concerns were one was he had a cabin there that was approved where he now wants to put this house. And, and my other concern was the wood, the wood burning in the, in those uh, fire rings. He met with his, said he was going to meet anyway with his partner, come back about two weeks later and says, hey, what I can do is instead of a cabin, how about if I park my RV in there? And I won't burn any wood in those fire rings anymore. Hmm, said, okay, so what I'll do for you is whenever there's a nuisance issue, I'll call you first and give him an opportunity to work through it. So uh, our working relationship was great. Have to admit, that went on until just this year. But we, you know, we do things like he, he needed seven dead trees removed, I needed firewood, I took them out, talk over the fence like good neighbors do, get along great. Everything changed about April twelfth when my family noticed measurements being made for the placement of approximately, it's about three thousand square feet, four bedrooms to be used as a caretaker's resident, residence. So Justin did not honor his commitment to not have anything in there but an under being. And then I asked him about the wood, burning wood in the fire rings. He said, yeah, we're going to do that. Sure enough, he is. Well, that's, that's another area where he's not honored his commitment. One more thing is he made it clear to me when I went in a statement that said he had another place for a caretaker's residence. Another place to put it by. He said, the reason, the reason it was going to go on this one because the other place had too much highway noise. Well, this property is zoned highway service. What do you, what do you think? So there are other places, other places where you can get a property and it's zoned, low-density residential. That's a quiet, private, nice place, doesn't, doesn't have to be on that highway service So my request is, you know, would you please? Please deny the location of this, this house? And would you honor Justin's request not to have any structures on the north side of that ravine? Okay, you have any questions?
Questions for Merv? Drew? Thank you, Merv.
Okay, thank you.
Ed Dreyer?
Good morning, my name's Ed Dreyer. I live at two-three-seven-three-four Pine Haven Drive, just north of Merv. Uh, when I first looked at this house in twenty-twenty-two, I went and talked to Justin. I was satisfied that he was going to abide by the rules and it's going to be quiet time and all those good things. So I bought the house. So now I've been there two years. Couple of things has happened last year anyway, on July fourth, there was aerial fireworks came out of the south east side of the, I don't know if it was RV or in, I had to call the sheriff's department, they came out and then it stopped. So that, and then sometimes the wedding venue would get really noisy. Couple of times last year it stayed up until midnight before it shut down. And I'm not that far from Merv. So I think what's happened is I believed him at first and I went and talked to him again. He showed me around the property, I drove in his truck, he showed me where everything's going to be, said, okay. So those four little cabins there at the bottom, they seemed to fill the first side of the wall there. And then not too long ago, somebody cut some wood from the ladies' house there. And it was green wood and so that smoked, so it's not seasoned wood. And that caused a lot of smoke in that, in that area. Uh, Terrell, Merv had to put no trespassing signs in the front of the driveways because people were driving, they were battering. When it got, got stuck in a ditch in front of my mom's trying to pull off a empty cord and try to turn around. So all these old things, um, I knew it was going in, I understand, I just liked to see the rules and here too and what he said was going to happen. Clock time from eight till eight in the morning, music gets inside. Um, other than that, I don't think I have any further statements.
Questions for Ed? Thank you, Ed. Um, just so the audience knows, we usually ask that anybody that, especially if they have opposition type comments, so that we can ask the applicant uh, to be the last speaker and give them an opportunity to address them. Anyone else from the audience that's prepared or decided to speak today? Thank you. Would you have a camera? Please introduce yourself for the record and you can go on from your suggestion.
Uh, Justin Eisenbrow with R and J LLC. Um, the first thing I would like to address on this was, uh, the last person that spoke said we've had our wedding venue open until midnight. That is absolutely false. We've never had it open past eleven o'clock. There are people that are still out and about at midnight, but our wedding venue closes at eleven o'clock. Our last call for drinks is at ten-thirty, our doors are shut at eleven o'clock. Um, the other thing I would like to say is the fireworks, we have no knowledge of there ever being fireworks on our policy. There's no fireworks that are allowed on our property. Um, we have quiet hours, uh, everyone that is greeted is told at eleven o'clock, quiet hours are, are enforced. Um, we have had people, um, because it's a wedding venue, they're there to party, they did, they, they're still going. We've had to shut them down multiple times, um, but that's, that's part of what's going to happen with this business. That's not something that's going to be on ordinary about it, but we do close it down. When we hear it, we go down and shut them down. We make a round at eleven o'clock or eleven fifteen. We usually give them to eleven fifteen to, to get into the cabins. And I had to do it this weekend, there were still people out and about at eleven fifteen. We had to get them closed down. That's going to happen. When we originally built this property, owned this property, bought this property, we offered to build an over fifty-five RV park, retirement park. They fought us and fought us and fought us on that. We went, we met with county commissioners, we gave them three options. Said we can build an over fifty-five RV park, we can sell this property to you guys or we'll build a wedding venue. There were twenty feet, four people at that meeting, all of them said to build a wedding venue. They didn't want an over fifty-five RV park. Now that's what they got. We told them at that meeting, with, when I'm, when I left that meeting, that's the direction that we'll go. But this is what you guys want, that's what we will change and do. As far as the setback on that house, it's eighty-five feet away from the fence line. I believe Merv's house is thirty-five feet. We're further away from the fence line in our property than what his house is. Our original plans were to build a five-bedroom cabin there. They've already been approved, we've already got the building permit for this house. There's going to be a house there. You can let us put a residential house there or we'll put a, or we'll put a four-bedroom cabin in there. It doesn't make any difference to us. We would like to put a five-bedroom cabin or five, or four-bedroom uh, manager's apartment to help control these issues that are going on, to have somebody there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, our, everything that we've done on this property, you're all welcome to come and inspect it at any time. This property is extremely nice. Uh, everybody, most people that have stayed there, we've had comments that this is the diamond of the Black Hills. This is the nicest property in the hills. We've done everything that we can to make this property beautiful, to make it secure. We've got to put a fence around it. There have been people walked out of the approaches down there. Our future plans is to close that approach, put a gate there and then put a sign up that says, please respect neighbor's property, um, the road is public property, we can walk up and down that, but the driveways are not. We will put a sign there on that, on that approach and we will put a gate there so it cannot be driven in and out of. Um, as I said, we've already been approved for a building permit. Uh, we would like a residential caretaker, caretaker's house there, that's always been in our property. Um, the fire pits, I've met with Merv on that and I said, we will let the people decide. And everybody, before we put fire pits in there, wanted fire pits. They want fire pits. We've got our permits for fire pits. Um, we're doing what we need to do. We've done everything to make this property as beautiful and as nice as we can. Um, and that's all I've got.
Questions for Justin?
Mr. Chair?
Head, Mr. Drew.
So, Mr. Eisenbrow, uh, in visiting with Mr. Guthmiller, uh, obviously the concern goes back to, you saw the video, uh, when I asked you the questions about building on the northern edge of that property. And I think it was fairly clear that you said no plans to build on the northern edge of the property. So those plans had changed at some point in time, apparently.
That, when you go back to that video, that was taken out of contents too. That was on those, that was on those cabins that are there. Those cabins are on that side of the drainage. The, the drawing that you had up on that day from our engineer before we had everything GPSed was the showing that cabins were going to be built down in that drainage. And I said, no, there's not going to be any cabins built down in that drainage. We're all going to be on the north side of that drainage. You can go back and look at the video, you can see the old drawing in there where it showed cabins being built down in there. And I said, no, there's not going to be any cabins down in that drainage. Or, or we had at that time any structures. This house just came about this spring. My partner's son and his daughter and family decided they wanted to move out here and, and run the lodging part of this. It was not planned before this spring. We had no plans of there being something there. Uh, I, I did meet with Merv, we had a five-bedroom apartment planned there, or a five-bedroom cabin planned there and it's been approved by the planning and zoning commissions. It's been approved by the, by the commissions. Um, I said, no, we won't build that there, uh, um, because we wanted to respect his privacy and which I believe we are, reporting a caretaker's residence there, someone who's going to live there constantly. It's a family. And we're eighty-five feet away from the property line. We're as close to the creek as we can build the house. We're to keep it as far away from the property line as we can be. There is another property, piece of property up there that we could build this house on, that is true. Um, but that's going to be a shop. We can either have a shop over there or we can have a, or a. Um, but that's gonna be a shop, we can either have a shop over there, or we can have a, a caretaker's residence.
Mr. Chair, follow?
Go ahead.
So, uh, Mr. Gutzmiller also indicated when he was speaking that he had visited with you and that you had indicated there was another site for that caretaker's.
Yeah, that's where there's gonna be a shop. We can build a shop there, or we can build a shop across from Merv's house, but that's only two places we have left to build. Otherwise, we have to go down and, and, and build in the creek, in that creek that runs through there, in that drainage. That's the only two places we have left to build and we gotta build a storage building.
So from the time that you originally planned this, obviously, a lot of things have changed as far as your plans are concerned.
Uh, there has been some changes, like I said, I did, with that, at the time that we originally built this, we did not know that uh, my partner's son and daughter-in-law wanted to move out here and run this.
Okay. As, as I listen to neighbors, you know, expressing their concerns, uh, that is a concern for me also, that, uh, that the relationship that you, that I thought you had with the neighbors, uh, has diminished at this point in time. Would, would you agree with that, that?
I would not agree with that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Um, when I first bought this property, I went up to meet with every neighbor and, and to be a neighbor with him. So with everybody there, I told them, introduced myself, I told them, you know, what we were planning on doing. We had people that told us they would rather live next to a nuclear waste dump. We had people told us that their main objective was to break us. To break us. To, to build this project. We changed our, our, our stream a third of the way into this to, to make the neighbors happy. We've done, we've went above and beyond on this, we've went above and beyond. The only thing that we didn't, didn't do was build a residential property next to them, which is what they wanted. But we've been willing to give and give and give on this. And we've, and we've had to fight, we, we, we came in to the county commissioner's office last year or the year before, asking to put a sign up. A, a large bullet sign. And then we got denied on that, we had neighbors find this on that, and now they're wondering why they got people going into their properties or to drive by our property? It's cause we don't have enough signage. It wasn't us, it was, it's, it's, we've, they fought us on everything that we've wanted to do. And, and yeah, there's property rights, but there's also property rights for the people who buy property in this county, in the state, in this, in this United States. We, there was, they could have bought this property. They chose not to. We chose to. We chose to put the money into it. We chose to do, this is, this is us running this business. It's not, we're gonna run our business the, the very best that we can. We're gonna make this property the very nicest property that we can possibly make it. We're gonna run this business as nicely as we can, we're gonna be as, as, as neighbor-friendly as we possibly can, but we're still gonna run business.
So I have, Mr. Chair.
Just a couple of questions.
Kevin?
Um, is that a new approach on the southeast side, or is that?
New approach.
Just from the aerials that, where you access it? Is?
Can I come up and look at your phone?
You can kinda see it right there on the south, right there, is that new, or is that how it's been there?
That's, that, that approach has always been there since we've owned the property, it was how it was, how it was, how it was, uh, accessed before we owned it. Um, and that's the only easement we have into that from this.
Oh, yeah, it, it just looks like on the aerial that it's new, but.
No, that, that approach was there before we bought it, that's how they accessed the property before.
How, how about the caretaker position now that, uh, is gonna be your friend's or your partner's son and daughter-in-law? Who handles that now? Do you handle that, like when you have to go out and check at eleven o'clock, or how is that monitored right now?
We've got, uh, uh, I stay up there on wedding weekends and go out and monitor it now. We've got a set of work campers that are on-site, um, they monitor it also.
Okay.
But it would be, I mean, I live sixty-five miles away from that. That's all.
Here's some questions for Justin. I've got a couple, Justin, and it's close to what Kevin's getting in. Is there any way without removing the rights of the people to rent from there that you can start? I assume you must settle up the day following, you certainly don't try to settle up with a, a rental crowd of wedding people on the evening. Do they settle up at that time, or how do they?
They, they settle up online before.
They do.
Yeah, but they all have to come in and check in. And at, at that time when they check in, we tell them that the quiet hours are eleven PM. We tell them that the campfires have to be out at eleven PM. Our new rule next year is gonna be ten PM for campfires, so we can.
That's what I was gonna ask you, whether that could be moved up to meet the eleven PM quiet hours a little better?
Yeah, we're, next year our campfire's gonna be ten PM, but we can't honor that now because we have contracts signed with, with people for the wedding venues that stating that, that the campfires can go to eleven. But we are moving it next year to ten PM, so it gives them an hour to wind down and get into their cabins.
What about closing out the building so that you could actually have it quiet by eleven rather than the eleven fifteen? I assume that you said you must be monitoring that by coming back up and.
No, they have to, the, the, the building itself is closed at eleven o'clock. The venue is closed at eleven o'clock.
And who does that?
We do.
You do?
We do, yes. We are on-site, there is somebody on-site all, at the wedding venue at all times, because we have a bar. We have an onsite bar there, so there's, when, our last call is ten thirty.
That's your operating hours for that license?
That, at eleven o'clock, um, the weddings are shut down. They do have to tell midnight to clean.
Okay.
But the guests have to be out at eleven o'clock. But they're just shut down at eleven o'clock and they, and they clean until midnight, and then they have to be out at midnight.
And then do you check them out after they clean then?
Uh, yes, yes, we are, there is somebody there on-site.
So you're there till?
Yep.
They're done cleaning?
Yep.
And my last one would be this approach, and, and I did remember that we had that before and it was some discussion because you indicated you've looked at removing it and things and your plan might be to remove it, is that something that?
The one that goes on to Pine Haven.
Yeah, is that something that's, uh, what would I say, sticks your company in a bad position if you remove that?
I don't think it does, um, um.
I'm not getting it back, whether the availability would be, in other words, you have an other exit right now if you had to in an emergency situation?
Yeah, well, we don't plan on taking the approach out, we're planning on putting a gate across the approach.
Some way signifying that it's closed.
Yes, and then we're gonna put a sign up on, there's a post there, we're gonna put a sign up that this is, you know, beyond this is private property.
Alright.
Um, and I've talked with Merv on that. Um, but it still will not control people from driving by and turning around in their yards. That's, that's not, nothing that we can control whatsoever, that is be, beyond our control.
That's a signage thing, as you indicated in your conversation.
Yep.
Then my last question is, is that a section line that goes through there? Is that why the fifty, you've got eighty-five feet, is it eighty-five or fifty-eight?
It's eighty-five feet from our fence line to the edge of that house.
Okay. Is that a section line that goes through there?
I'm not su, I don't, that might be a section line. There's a section line on the, on the, uh, west side.
Yeah, so first I can put it up there, uh, that's just a proposed setback for the, the building, it's not a requirement for.
I believe the requirement is forty-five feet, isn't it?
Even if they did, the eighty-five would exceed the.
Highway service to rear lot residential is thirty. With a setback and he's additional fifty-five feet from that.
Then my last one and I'll go away like a bad headache. Um, signage, you indicated that you'd like to still have more available signage so they could make your entrance.
We would love to have a bigger lit, big lit sign.
What's your plan there?
I guess, we were, we were shut down, we, 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 we tried to get a larger sign. They only allow us the two hundred and forty square foot sign, which is.
Because of the onsite sign?
Yep.
You'd have to have a sign offsite to do it?
Well, even an onsite sign, if we had a big, big lit sign, it would be more, you know, to draw people's attention to it. Ours is the first sign when you come to that property on the right-hand side. They've got about four seconds to see it and go before they're buying it.
Alright. Yeah, I drive that and it, it does seem small.
Yeah, and we asked for a larger one, but the neighbors complained against that also, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Eisenbrow? You'll have to come back up, is it alright if he just?
Absolutely.
Sure, sure. Come back up, Merv, and just, you have to introduce yourself because everybody doesn't get to see us on TV.
Okay, I'm Merv, Gutzmiller, again. And as far as the discussion that started on what is gonna be built on the north side of that ravine, Justin's right, there was, like, I think there were some cabins drawn in there. But you heard him say on the video that he's not gonna have anything on the north side of that ravine. It's nothing to say cabins, house, or anything at the time. As far as why are people coming into our yard and what's the problem with the signage? I wanted to buy that property from Pancras, you guys probably know that. He wouldn't sell sixty-six feet from the highway end because he's gotta have his billboards there. That's Justin's property, that's his problem, his, his signage is set back sixty, sixty-six feet. And the only sign he's got is a billboard that's a long ways away from where they enter, coming in there. So people, people don't know where they had, how they get into that place. Those are coming down our driveway.
Excuse me, Merv, so they're missing it turning back into the, uh, next available site, uh, beyond what, the motel there a little bit?
Yeah, Pine Haven Drive.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody who's clearing that that's listening to us.
Yeah, and as far as putting something in that other, that other entrance he's talking about, sometimes people are pulling campers in there. And, and what it looks like, we'd ask Sarah, the neighbor that owns that property, to have it surveyed. Because it looks to me like they're gonna be crossing her property to get in there, so that, before you spend a lot of money on that, I would say make sure it's gonna work, so we're not driving over it. Okay, any questions?
Now, you did hear, as I understood it answering my question, you're, you're going to pro- possibly inactivate, would be a better word.
That's, that is our.
And then increase signage that you're allowed on that as to the fact that that is not the entrance to your business.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Merv, and you understood that to be the case?
And as far as the neighbor, we do, not allowing a larger sign, that was, that's a code here, you guys, some of you probably remember when that came up. Couldn't have a bigger sign, that wasn't us saying no sign.
I was gonna, there's no use calling Cody up, that was the code, and, and I'm sure the commissioners understand that onsite sign at two hundred and fifty square feet, that's been a bone of contention in the past for a lot of us, me in particular. So I do understand that it, it is our regulation or ordinance that says two hundred and fifty feet that he has to deal with.
But we asked for a larger one, that's why we sent out a conditional use permit, it was to ask for a larger one at that time.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Merv. Anything else, Justin?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You know, how does commission wanna do, you wanna put a motion on the table and then discuss it, or open discussion right now? I'll, chair will go along with what you like.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve conditional use permit COCU twenty-four zero zero one seven.
Second. Moved in second and to approve per staff's recommendation, COCU two four dash zero zero one five with eight conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, it's open for discussion.
I'm, uh, I'm not gonna support the, uh, motion. Uh, I'm gonna go back to the original, uh, understanding is that there would not be any structures, uh, in that area where he's proposing the caretaker's residence, uh, in light of the support of the neighbors on that side that are opposed to it.
Mr. Chair, I go along with Mr. Drew's thoughts exactly, so I will not be going along with this either.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In my humble opinion, I believe that a lot of the complaints I heard could be quelled um, sooner than later with a caretaker that's on-site. I think anytime you have a caretaker or any kind of rental situation where your property management is directly accessible is a good, uh, business practice. And that's why I'm supporting this endeavor.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would, um, agree with that a hundred percent, I think that that's gonna be a good move to get a caretaker on-site. Um, I wasn't here with a discussion when it initially came up, but, um, not having been there, my thought that the discussion was probably that there wouldn't be any more cabins or anything north of the drainage area. Um, a caretaker residence is completely different than having guests in there. Um, there's not gonna be a lot of activity in that, it's gonna be pretty quiet, um, just cause it's, uh, basically a residential home. So I will support this and I think it's a good move for the campground.
And to piggyback on that, it's eighty-five feet from the property line, and as I understood, the north neighbor, he was thirty-five feet from the property line, that's a hundred and ten feet there, thereabouts. So, I mean, that's quite a distance between homes, um, that there seems to be a lot of foliage between the properties. So I don't see that as being detrimental.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I, from the very beginning on this, I felt that you had a highway that was the busiest highway in the Black Hills, maybe in the state in the summertime. And that ground laid foul for forty or fifty years, it was no development. Um, and finally, we get some development on it, which would be natural. And I hate to see us try to micromanage this. Uh, this micromanagement has to really be between the landowners and it seems like they've made some real effort here on the part of both of them, and I hope they'll continue that, cause I think that's the way these things are gonna be resolved. I, I tend to sympathize with the, uh, developer because I think it's a reality and, um, you're not very far from the second major urban area in the state. You can't expect to live in a bucolic wilderness forever. Development takes place, and I think this is reasonably responsible. I mean, I think the property owner has done a good job of trying to accommodate uh, the viewpoints of the residents that were there before. But if we use this as a cudgel or a tool to prevent the next person who comes along with an idea to develop, uh, we're gonna be in a sad circumstance. And, uh, I wish we could somehow dictate good efforts specifically, but when we start doing that, I can say we're getting into an area that's beyond policy and leads to personality. So these gentlemen and neighbors are gonna have to work this out, I think the, the proposal's a responsible one. As responsible as something as imperfect as development can be, so I will support this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't believe we as a, a commission have the right to enforce maybe, uh, verbal dis- discussion between neighbors. I, because it's not on paper, it's not one of our conditions, so I, although I sympathize with the neighbors, um, if they feel like they've been misunderstood or, or things have gone too far, um, I, I don't think we can enforce something that wasn't in writing by our planning, planning commission, you know, something that was a condition.
Thank you. I'm a little more in Karen's ballpark, I guess I wanna head it back to what the request is, it's caretaker's residence. That's what we're being asked to look at today. And the truth is, if there's an alternative location for that caretaker's residence, I think we oughta look at it, I'm not concerned. I'm not concerned whether there's an employee or an owner in that residence. If it's noisy or where the alternative residence is at, that certainly would be a pleasant thing to do for a business as far as in relative to their neighbors. I don't know that there isn't septic problems on them. I'm just saying, I'm not sure we've, it's really been looked into enough, whether, we don't have that direction. We don't have that latitude other than asking. And again, I want to limit it to the caretakers residence. The rest of the issues have been decided. It was decided who brought the property over the years. It was decided what we're moving forward with. They've met the regulations and ordinances that involve building permits and locations. This is the request, the caretakers. I wish we were looking at this two weeks from now after getting an option to, to look at another caretakers residence, but that's also the right of a property owner to decide. And as long as they're staying within their limits on the setbacks and whatnot, that's what the county calls for and the building requirements. So it's difficult for me to either support or not support this one. This is, I'm regularly on the fence and I'm not often on the fence, as you guys well know. But I would certainly like to throw that in that it would be nice to know whether there was an alternative location for this particular item. That's about it. Anyone else want to throw in two cents before we vote? You certainly got a right to. We never ask people to sit and wait and then get unhappy. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I do a roll call?
Yes.
So I can get Charlie?
Uh, aye. I'm well, no. In other words, I'm voting against the motion to approve.
Jim?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Yes.
Five to two.
Five, three, isn't it?
Four to three.
Four, three.
Four, three.
Sorry.
Got one too many little stitches in there. All right, folks, that's where it's at. And this, this particular one does risk with the, you might want to explain the appeal process before we go away.
To increase that environmental planner, someone has thirty days to appeal. How they appeal, they would need to talk to probably their attorney about the appeal process.
Very good. Thank you. On to item number nineteen.
These are the appeals. Tell me about that. Megan Talmadge, planner. Agenda item number four, or number nineteen is conditional use permit CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero one seven. It is to allow an accessory dwelling unit on the property. The applicant and owner is Deborah Laland. This is located at eleven seventy-one E East Paradise Drive. The current zoning is rural residential and the existing land use is also residential. There's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are listed on screen. It does meet that criteria. In addition, zoning section three twenty-four lists criteria that must be met to allow an accessory dwelling unit. Those are also listed on screen and have been met. There were no major objections or concerns regarding this request. During the site visit, staff did note that the current residence does not have an address on it, but that will need to be posted in addition to the address for the ADU. The current residence is five hundred and seventy-six square feet and the proposed ADU is five hundred and twenty-eight. And the ADU will utilize the current onsite wastewater treatment system. It's sized for three bedrooms. Total bedrooms that will exist on the property would be two. So it would still allow for an additional bedroom, whether that be in the main residence or in the ADU. Staff, I did receive one complaint over phone. They said that they were either unable or not willing to submit public comment. Their concern was other neighbors in the prop, in the surrounding area also doing this. But since this is in, other than that, staff has no issues with this and recommends approval with fourteen conditions.
Questions for Megan? So the garage is going to be the ADU?
It will actually be, oh, it looks like I didn't include it on the slide show. It'll be a totally separate building. It will be a pole shed with a portion inside of it. It is this page of the packet.
Okay, well, that, I, okay, I see what the pole show up at the top is where it's actually going to be.
Yes, exactly. It'll be north of the current residence and detached garage.
Okay. Makes more sense. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Megan? Two quick ones. I see that the operating license on the wastewater treatment is this year. Does that mean that they didn't have one before or do we replace the number when we issue a current one?
We replace the number when we issue a current one.
All right.
So the operating permits are now operating licenses. So it, it is also a little bit different of a format.
So that's why we get a new number in front of us and we should look forward to that in the future then?
Yes.
All right. And the second one be, it's always, I thought it was a little cute that the, it looks to me like the garage is bigger than the two structures. And we make people get conditional use permits, put the garage on if they haven't got their house on yet, but just a comment. That way, that's one of the few I've ever seen that way. Any other questions for Megan? All right. Anybody from the audience who wants to speak on this matter or feels they need to? You have to come up and introduce yourself for the mic, but you certainly have the right to have a question. That's all right.
My name is William Meredith. I live at sixty-eight seventy Sunridge Road. I just, I don't understand what an ADU is. What's an ADU?
Megan's going to tell you right now. Thank you.
An accessory dwelling unit is a dwelling unit on a property that is accessory to the primary. It is smaller in size and it must meet this criteria. Yeah, smaller than the primary residence. It's on a permanent foundation, not a recreational vehicle. So generally it has its own criteria that needs to be met, but it's a dwelling unit that is smaller than the primary dwelling unit.
Yes, and a number of other limitations that are by ordinance. That's correct. In fact, even on its use.
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
They are limited as to the use as well as the size and, and structure.
So it can't be used, and under our current ordinance, the ADU ordinance, it can't be used as a short-term rental and it has to be under seven hundred square feet.
Correct. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Chair would accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we pass CO CU twenty-four dash oh oh one seven with seven conditions?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, excuse me. Seven is seven fourteen. Yes, fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second and to approve per staff's recommendation, CO CU two four dash zero zero one seven with fourteen conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none or in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Cody, we get to see you again.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Agenda item twenty is conditional use permit CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero one eight. It's to allow recreational vehicles to be used on the, to be used as temporary employee living quarters on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Keith Stone Ventures Incorporated, Andrew Bussie. Location is two four zero three five Highway sixteen A. It involves twenty point eight acres. Current zoning is Highway Service District with an existing land use of commercial and recreation. Access is off Highway sixteen A and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the planning commission may consider in the review of the conditional use permit. Those answers are on the screen. It does appear that the request would meet those. This is a temporary use for employee housing. He plans on building an actual residence. He just, the time got away from him this year and he has a couple employees coming up who need residences. So that's what he wants to use the RVs for. This was right around for interdepartmental review. There were no comments or concerns that were received. Once the residence is construction, constructed, the RVs would be removed from the property. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CO CU twenty-four dash eighteen with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
I have one.
Go ahead.
The difference between this and the property up on Rimrock Highway is because this is temporary residence and up there they were looking for something more permanent?
Correct. He eventually wants, he, he's proposing to build an actual residence, but with everything that he's got going on on the property and the employee housing, staff's going to work with him on actually doing a PUD overlay because we're starting to get into a lot of conditional use permits and it'd be easier just to get it under one PUD overlay. So that would probably be what the direction we would go. So you'll, you'll see it. He'll have a caretakers residence and employee housing on there as well.
Thank you.
Yes. Any questions down there? I have one. I assume that, and I've never asked this before, there's a certain amount of in-house flexibility in temporary. When you say temporary living quarters, does that mean, and I'm just picking things out, does that mean that they, they could use a trailer that didn't have a peak roof, that sort of thing? Or do they have to meet those other guidelines?
No, they'd still need to meet those other guidelines. They're, in our ordinance, generally temporary means less than a hundred and eighty days in, in a calendar year.
All right.
So for like this operation, it's mainly the summer.
Okay. But you, as the planning department, apply those flexibilities and they're written so that the person knows that?
Yeah, so in order, so if someone was coming in with like a, a single-wide mobile home to put as temporary housing, they would still need to meet the requirement of what a single-wide mobile home needs to be under our ordinance with a peak roof.
Parking space, those sort of things.
It's tough to meet all those requirements.
Any other questions for Cody? Anyone from the audience here to speak on this? Chair would address the motion.
I move we approve CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero one eight with eleven conditions.
Second to it.
Yeah.
Moved in second and to approve per staff's recommendation, CO CU two four dash zero zero one eight with eleven conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none or in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried on to item number twenty, I believe.
Twenty.
One, twenty.
Item twenty-one is mining permit registration, MP twenty dash eleven. It's to register an existing mining operations. Definitely on landowners Pete Leane Sons Incorporated. They do have a representative here if there's any questions. Location of the property is off of West Sturgis Road. They do use access for Sturgis Road and Universal Drive. There is special flood hazard area on the property. There's a hundred-year end floodway. It involves three thousand two hundred and thirty-two acres. There's multiple properties and multiple zoning districts that are on the property. This was heard before the planning commission on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. It was continued. There was some properties that were to the east of Sturgis Road that weren't included on the notification letters. So staff worked with the applicants to get, to get all that taken care of. So the applicant has requested to register their existing Rapid City Pit or Blackhawk Quarry to establish their legal non-conforming status. The pit is covered under South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources Mine License eighty-three one hundred and twenty-one dash one zero nine one. Mining activity includes excavation, hauling, crushing, and washing aggregates and stockpiling. Total disturbed area is approximately four hundred and fifty-seven acres. They do have erosion control measures that will continue to be in place to control dust and sediment from leaving the site. Once an area is done mining, the site would be re-vegetated. It appears to staff that that is meeting section three twenty-eight of the Pennington County Plan, or Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. The Pennington County Planning Department has concluded that the permit limit for the Blackhawk Quarry be three thousand three hundred and thirty-two acres with no more than four hundred and fifty-seven acres disturbed at one time on the subject properties. So with that, staff does recommend the approval of mining permit registration, MP twenty dash eleven with conditions. And staff would make one change. It says the permit limit of the Robertson Pit that should read Blackhawk Quarry.
Where is this at?
On page two of four, under the recommendation, the first condition. Says the Robertson Pit. Carried over from a different request, it should say Blackhawk Quarry.
Looks like it's in your analysis, too.
Yes.
Questions for Cody?
The only one I've got is under the credit review, number two. What in the world are you saying there?
Oh, so, so the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, section three twenty P lists three criteria of what you have to do to, or what you have to meet to be able to register as legal non-conforming. Basically, it's a lot of legal stuff in there. If they have a permit from us for like a construction permit, a mine license from the state of South Dakota, and they were actively mining those sites or any one of those three, they can, they're legal non-conforming and they can, they can register mine. So basically what we're doing here is if there's a vacant piece of property that's underneath their mine license, they can excavate and do mining operations on that property without coming in and getting a new permit under section three twenty.
So do they have to clear out some of the old property they've been working on, dress it up, or they just keep expanding?
No, there's, there's a lot, under the state rules and regulations, when generally and what they do is when they're done in one spot, they'll reclaim that site and move on and
Okay.
disturb and they just go full, so on and so forth.
I'll just, I'll just give you, sorry, Brittany Moller, planning director, I'll give you some history where that came from. So the objective manifestation showed that you had to show a significant intent to actually mine those areas. You couldn't come in and say, yep, we planned on it. You had to show that you had some geologic study, that you found a mine license with the state. You actually had to show some action that you were going to actually mine those areas. So that's what that objective manifestation means in lieu of subjective. So subjective would be like, oh, we plan on it. It's always been in our, so, you, you know, having a business plan, having geologic studies, having, obtaining a mine license prior, getting construction permits, showing, showing some objective intent. So that's where that comes from.
Okay.
Don't go away. Any other questions? I've got one. In today's technological world, people can get on the internet and they get satellite pictures, they get everything else. Are we writing four hundred and fifty-seven acres because that's something that's already in a document or that's a approved and signed on amount? And is there a plus and minus in that? And you see what I'm saying? If somebody nowadays, if you oppose something and you can find backup for it, you're out there in, in the internet space, you've got some pretty good leverage to, to, to bring your case forward. Is this four hundred and fifty-seven acres safe without a plus and minus?
So that four hundred and fifty-seven acres is a culmination, sorry, Cody, but it's a culmination of several permits. So that four hundred and fifty-seven acres is a culmination, sorry, Cody, but it's a culmination of several permits that Pete Lean has gotten since the early eighties.
Right.
So this is kind of the consolidation. So when section three twenty.
Acreages that were involved in other.
Correct. And so when three twenty got approved, and it went through the process, what they determined a parcel was, was their business unit. So when they came in to do their registration and get that business unit, their parcel. Approved through this registration, saying they have every intent to mine this area, which, which is. What they consider all of these parcels, the outline, is their business unit. Um, that they've always intended to mine this, that they purchased it for the intent to mine it, that they have gotten. Um, mining permits, construction permits, things like that in our office since the early eighties. What this is doing is this is delineating the outside of their parcel or their business unit, essentially. So the intent was always to mine this area. At some given time, there's different portions of this for different materials in different timeframes, so it's consolidating them. Does that make sense?
That was coming from was the four fifty-seven disturbed. I could foresee any business making an error in opening something up because we're also dealing with bonds. On, uh, re, uh, what do they call that recovery? And that sort of thing. That's what I'm getting is, so when we lock them into four hundred and fifty-seven. One person might feel doing four sixties not out of the question, but another person might feel five hundred ought to be a plus or minus situation. I'd have given five or ten percent because those things happen. But that's all I'm coming from. I, I just feel that's a hard fast number, and the more we get in technology where people. Like me, who know nothing about it, have access to it. I mean, we're, we could end up outside the borders on things, and I'm sure they do.
So, so the applicants here, we could have her speak on that four fifty-seven.
Alright. Cause that's money and bonds and everything. I mean, your whole business is linked to that stuff. Yes, you have to introduce yourself just for the record.
Alright, Daniel Liebert, it's with Pete Lean and Sons. I'm the executive technical director of environmental and safety affairs for the corporation. Um, the, the limit, I'm not really sure where that came from, and it is kind of an oddly phrase disturbance limit. Cause it makes it sound like that's the maximum disturbance. Usually when you're talking disturbance limits within mining permits. It's how much you have actively open at any one time, and we usually try to keep it somewhere between that four fifty, five hundred. Even with all of our plants and stockpiles and, and all that disturbance. But I don't believe three twenty actually has a requirement for there to be a disturbance limit on there. So I'm not sure where that came from within the registration anyhow.
Sorry. I think it's just an indication of what is open right now, from what they could tell. Um, I don't know if it actually should be a limit, cause we don't have a limit requirement in, um, three twenty. Basically what they open up areas, they excavate it and they reclaim, and then a lot of it has to do with their bonding with the state and things. So there isn't necessarily a, every operation is different, just depending upon.
The only reason I bring it up is because people, I have a tendency, and we saw it here today, hold us to our word on these things. Even though there was no handshake, there was nothing in writing. And I guess as a commissioner, I feel responsible if I said something and, and it was taken as a gospel. Uh, that I'd be concerned, but I'll throw right in on another thing. I wouldn't think it's a long time before people can drive out and record on their phone. Your blasts and compare them to whatever you're, you know, there's gotta be somebody gonna put an app together on that. Follow me where we're headed with all this, that you are in a situation as a business. Where you may be taken to task by alternative looks at what the regulations are. And I'm just saying, I think we gotta look at plus and minuses, and if the four fifty-seven is not, I'm happy. If it's not a hard fast number.
Yeah, there isn't a requirement in the ordinance, whether the, this commission would like to put that limit on as a condition.
Sure.
Um, it would probably be better to be a not to exceed and give them significant. That way, if people are concerned that there's going to be the whole property opened up at any one time, which. Is probably never gonna, I mean, in most mining, that, that's not usually.
I think the state has some regulations on you, what can be opened up, I'm sure.
Yeah, we, we do have some regulations on that. Plus, we also follow concurrent reclamation. So every time we actually move material, we move it into a reclamation status, so we don't have to move it twice.
It's a noted material.
Yeah, cause just to stockpile material to go and grab it and reclaim with it later is also an added expense, so no one wants to do that.
I didn't mean to gum up the works or extend this thing, but I'm just trying to say. I hope I'm smart enough to see that there's something down the future that's going to get tougher on these sort of things. When it comes to the citizens that oppose us supporting something. Thank you. Yes, Cody.
Uh, Cody Zack, environmental planner. So we can take that, that out of there. Uh, so the condition would then read, uh, that the permit limit of the Blackhawk Quarry be. The property is described as, and then it just lists the legal descriptions.
Could you add in something, just they have to meet the state requirements? It's certainly within their bond, follow me, whatever those are.
Um, so one thing that with the, um, condition number two, the mining operation continually meets section three twenty-eight of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. A lot of that's covered under, under that section.
Very good. I'm, I'm comfortable with that, and I think it expands so that we all understand what we're looking at. Even the people that are just listening to us. And then I do have a speaker request for him on this, Cody. If you wait. Is it Tim Markle? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read the last name. Apologize. You have to introduce yourself just for the record? Yeah, it's a little, you, you're not good at left-handed writing yet.
No, not yet.
Alright.
Tim Marklebets. I live at fifty-seven twenty Key Lane, uh, which is right off of there of Merritt Road. I've been there for eighteen years. The ink wasn't even dry on my signature when my realtor in the Pennington County. Title, Pennington County Title Company told me, oh yeah, by the way, you guys have a quarry against your house. Well, for eighteen years, I've been trying to work with Pete Lean on Key Lane to try to get them to fix our road. Numerous potholes that have been expensed out of our pockets to replace, to repair. I'm in a flood plain adjacent to that property. There was a crushed storm drain under Key Lane, and when I addressed this with Pete Lean, they told me, we have more lawyers. That will run you dry on a bank account and will make you find a new access to your own home. We will not fix that road. That's your responsibility, and it's their access to access their property. I have developed cracks in my foundation, cracks in my home from their blasting. I'm concerned about all these things and the impact on our livelihood in our area. Right now, they have rock trucking going up and down Merritt Road. Grooves in that road. These are double-wide tractor trailers. That do not go thirty-five miles per hour down that road. There are children on bikes. There are people walking, their dogs. Their safety up and down, all over this place. They claim to be stewards of the land. I have yet to see them ever be stewards of the land. Instead, they try to oppose you every time you try to talk to them. We got lawyers, we got this, we have more money than you. You're damn right you do. If you want to be blasting in my area, show me how you're gonna not have my house become flooded. Show me how my house isn't gonna fall apart because it's getting blasted right across the road. I could care less about their burns. Their burns don't do crap to help reduce the noise, the destruction that they do. They have every right to mine. They own the property. I can't stop them from mining, but they're gonna mine. I want them to be responsible to us owners that live all the way around them, safety and our livelihoods. I can't even drink my waddle because they blast, and the sediments make my water so hard. I've gone through numerous washers and dryers, hot water heaters, dishwashers. I have filtration systems all over my house. Doesn't matter. I can't even drink my water. It's so hard. And that was on document from coal again. I'm just frustrated. I don't know what to do. So I'm just asking for help, uh, helping us little guys out. So.
Questions for Tim? Tim, I got a, one that starts out, comes to mind after listening to your, your opposition. How close are the active operations right now to your?
Right across the road.
You say across the road, uh, Old Sturgis Road?
Well, right now, it's really hard to. I think for that two thirty-one is that? I, I'm thinking that's us. Thanks, Cody.
Cody, while you're doing that, I'll just ask my, how long have you lived at your current?
Eighteen.
How, excuse me?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. When you originally bought it, I certainly know they didn't have a statement list of what you're running. If the previous owner, if they knew that there was a quarry right to your edge, they did not have to tell you at that time.
Yeah, it was Howie Construction who actually owned the, Gordon Howie with Remax, I believe is the one that owned the house. Um, he flipped it, and we bought it from Yanni Yorgas with Remax at that time.
Okay. They do have, where people would have to have told you now.
Yeah, that, that.
Not that they all do, but they, they're supposed to sign an affidavit, I believe. Kevin, you know more about that nowadays. They would have to declare something like that, wouldn't they?
If they knew for sure that it was an issue there.
If they knew it, okay.
So, right there where it says seventeen, that's me. That's my house.
Alright.
So right now, that's all Pete Lean, right across the road. That's all Pete Lean. They're not actively mining that current area. But if you go farther up the hill. Uh, that's where they are mining currently, and when they were blasting. So you can kinda see it right there, that eighteen, that's where they've been blasting currently and working. And you can feel the house just shake when they were blasting. The kids always giggle because they're like, oh, the mini earthquakes. And, you know, you're, as a parent, you know, some, I wonder, that was very scared that the house was gonna collapse on her at one time. And I said, no, that's not gonna happen. But these trucks go up and down that Merritt Road, and there's a blind hill as you come off of. Sturgis Road to turn left to go or right, to go up Merritt Road. That's a blind hill, and then the rock trucking that they use has almost hit me as I'm trying to get to my property. So I just, I have so many doubts of their safety, reclaiming, doing this, being good neighbors. When they've threatened me so many times on trying to get my Key Lane fixed, which is their access road, cause there's a gate. Literally right across my house, to where they have access to their property. And I've gone out there with the representatives there, and I'm like, hey, can you guys help us here with the road that's your access? The storm drains damaged, the water piles up, it comes into my yard, it comes into the neighbor next to me. And that's why I was getting told, well, we can just block you off and good luck on finding a new access to your house, and we have better lawyers.
Can I get you to expand that out so that I can see where Sturgis Road is at in conjunction with that?
So we actually have a trailer court that's next to us, and that's was our original access to our properties back in the day. But because that was owned by Bill Jangle's brother, and they wanted to put one more trailer in. And he got approved for that, it blocked off our access, and that's became Key Lane. And tho- those are the stories that were told to me by neighbors that have lived there longer than I have, who couldn't make it today because of medical. So I don't know what we can, what can be done, if there can, anything can be done, just when you're taking into account the approval of this. That there's safety concerns, there's environmental concerns, there's many concerns that are being had, just not by me, but by others that were not able to make it today.
Yeah, I've got a question for Cody. Cody, do you know whether that road's on the maintenance list for the county?
Merritt Road or Key Lane?
Key Lane.
I guess either in my mind.
It's not a road district. I, without looking at a plot and seeing if it's a private access easement or a public right-of-way, I wouldn't know off the top of my head.
So it's probably, I, I, and I know the county hasn't, it's been a number of years since they've taken on maintenance responsibilities for any road, so.
Looking at how it's dedicated on there without it being broken out into its own separate.
Right.
Like, uh, I wanna say parcel, it appears that it'd be a private access easement, which we wouldn't have.
Heard it, it was a developer's road.
Yeah, so highway wouldn't have, uh, the county highway department wouldn't have any maintenance.
But it is within Pennington County.
It is within Pennington County. I can't say the same for Merritt Road.
That's your dividing line.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing it's a.
That is a dividing line.
Yeah, my, uh, my mailbox is a meat county. My house is Pennington.
That doesn't help you being on a dividing line, you know that.
I know.
Alright.
That's why I feel like I've had an uphill battle for eighteen years.
That is a difficult situation when your road is on a develop, on, right on a dividing line. It's always has been for those folks that live rurally. I'm sure the city people don't understand that, but that is a difficult situation.
Yep, and I mean, I have seen, they have torn up Merritt Road a couple of times, repaved Merritt Road. Couple of times, but I mean, those trucks are heavy and they are just grooving Merritt Road nonstop. There's already grooves in the road from the last time they just repaired it.
You believe those to be, uh, Pete Lean and Sons trucks?
Well, they're rock trucking, so I'm.
Rock, who's under contract.
Yep.
Any other questions for Tim?
I have one. How close is the quarry now to you? Is, is the picture that's here is about right?
That picture's still very accurate to where the quarry is now, so I don't know where they're planning on blasting next. If they're trying to move closer to the Key Lane area. I mean, that, that is really hard to judge on a piece of paper that you get at the post office that you sign for. You know, this is the new proposed area that we're gonna be blasting in, but those trucks have been increasing. That hill has been disappearing more and more towards the west, so I mean, they're actively working in that area.
So theoretically, this quarry could be literally right across the road from you someday?
Yes. So no, those are the things I'm trying to get addressed today is, where that seventeen is, that is nothing but a flood zone. When it rains, that storage or that drainage covert thing or whatever that's collapsed. All that water builds up by those trees, and that house that's just to the west of me and myself. We have a river running through there. There's just no, nowhere for this water to go, thus I pay flood insurance. Which I also found out when I was signing paperwork. The joys of homeownership.
Tim, I'd have to, and I don't mean to disparage your comments, but. This commission has dealt a number of times with Lean, and Lean's even stepped forward on a number of issues that we've brought to them before. In regards to, oh, what am I thinking? Dust control, dust abatement, all sorts of things that they've stepped forward and, and, and done on a voluntary basis. And they've not been, this is the first time I've heard such an overwhelming disparity in, in what we've seen. By the performance of that firm.
Yeah, I mean, it has not been a good relationship between me and Pete Lean. I've had conversations with numerous people at their office, and it's all been the same thing. We can outlaw you, we can outmoney you, just deal with it. I've been asking to buy me out at times. If it's, you know, just get rid of me, and I'll go away. And they're like, no, we have no plans for that area, so, and, you know. I'm just frustrated. It's been eighteen years of dealing with them, and they're the biggest bully I've ever met. So, and that's, I, I find it amusing when I see their commercials on TV where they claim to be stewards of the land and everything else, and I'm just like. No, you're not. This is all a horse and pony show to make yourself look good. Those of us that deal with you, you, you're, you're a horrible neighbor. Don't like you.
Other questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this issue? You may, you need to introduce yourself, uh, for the record? Even though you've been up here before, we recognize you, but we need to talk to the people that are listening.
My name is William Meredith. Again, I live at sixty-eight seventy Sunridge Road, which is just off Nemo Road. Um, I was. Um, I was notified of this activity because I'm within half a mile, apparently. Um, I was unaware of that when I bought the property, I've only owned the property since twenty nineteen, my wife and I have, are. Two weeks from moving into a home, but we've in- invested a considerable amount of money in. I don't have an issue with um. The land use so much as I have a vested interest in making sure. That there are regulations or rules or covenants or something. That protect, that protect the homes of those that are nearby, I don't believe I'm in nearly the shape. As this gentleman in terms of location, I don't know what the exact distance is, but if you look at the map that we received, um. Which is that drawing with all kinds of land, it it cuts off. And you can't even see my property, which is gonna be south of that, um, I don't know whether you can expand that at all. So where's Nemo Road or South Canyon Road? Cuz that's how I access my property. Right, so in comparison to these properties.
What what road are you on, Sunridge?
I'm on Sunridge, yes. I see it there. Right, so where that, uh. You can see the residence is there, um, in the blue to the, where Sunridge cuts right through. And then my property is that triangular piece to the north, um, that is right at the corner of where that blue subdivision is. Right, that that's mine, I'm not even sure exactly where Pete Lean's property is. Um, is that one of the pieces just north there? I believe so. It mu- it must be, right? You see what I mean, it's very difficult to tell exactly where they are.
I'm not sure.
I'm not exactly sure how how close I am, obviously, I'm within half a mile. Um, that subdivision that we were just looking at on that drawing is homes that. Uh, uh, this day and age have to be approaching a million dollars, all of those homes along there. And I I I don't. Pete Lean has not come over that hill yet, okay, they've been back there and they've trimmed some trees and they've they've, we've not had any issues with them. My concern is, is that in the future, they have the right to come in here and pretty much do whatever they want, that's what I'm hearing. And I've also, you know, they've been around here forever, I grew up here in Rapid City, I went to Stevens High School. Um, I went to school with some of the Leans. Um, they, I have no doubt in my mind that they are a giant bully. Okay, so I have significant concerns about this, and I would just wanna go on the record because five years from now. When they open up a million fifty feet from my property line, I'll be back. And I think we need to handle serious controls on seismic activity so that they can monitor, I just built a home. Upwards of a million dollars, and if they come in there and start blasting my foundation out of it, I'm not gonna be a happy camper. So, you know, some fair planning is not necessarily, uh. Out of bounds here to have some sort of of limitations or controls on what they do. I have a private well, it costs me eighty five thousand dollars to put in, the last thing I want is for them to contaminate it. So I would like to see the county carefully put in the controls necessary to keep them. Uh, from damaging a number of properties, mine in particular, I won't speak for my neighbors. But my guess is my neighbors don't even know because they're probably just outside that half a mile of it. So, heads up, um, there's a significant amount of development along everything. Um, it's probably gonna be a headache for Pete Lean going in the future, if they, un- unless they. Develop good working relationships with us and tell us what they're doing and take every precaution they can to protect our properties. That's all I have to say.
Questions for William?
I I just have a comment.
Can I, I was gonna ask Daniel to come back up and clarify one thing first. Daniel? Brought up two questions, one I'd like to know, how long have you got a a thumb look, how long some of these? That were combining all under this one now, how long they've existed, the the property ownership?
Um, the property ownership has gone anywhere, the company started in like four, in the forties. Um, the property ownership on that side of the road was probably like in the eighties or earlier. For portions of it, and then I know they sold and bought certain pieces over that time. I can clarify one thing, um, as far as the area that we're kinda talking about a little bit too. Up here is what we call our section thirty quarry, so that's an active quarry right now. Um, this part down here was also a quarry, but that was a competitor quarry, so this is not us. This is section thirty, we do own property over in this area, however, that's not being registered. Because we don't have an active mining permit over right now, so we did.
You have not gone through the processes.
So we're not registering that property, though, even though Pete Lean and Suns owns it. Eventually, we might wanna mine that property, but we would have to come before the county through separate, through ordinance three twenty and get a new permit to mine that.
As well as the state.
Yeah, it wouldn't fit under this registration.
Okay, my second question would be, uh, you're blasting logs and whatnot, those are available? Or are those sent into the state, does the state?
The state can request them at any time, they don't, cuz it's a lot of paperwork unless.
Do they do so when, when a private property owner requests, uh, over they feel something was.
They will call us, um, when either us or our competitors have a neighbor. Um, complaint or call in on any type of blast that they felt was.
So they don't limit it to just yours, they, the state goes further.
They know we keep seismics around our perimeters of all of our blasts, so they'll contact us if they're looking for it for anyone else as well.
Okay, and then they handle the review of that? Any other questions for Daniel Walsh? Thank you, Dan. Mr. Coleman?
I'll pass.
Anyone else from the audience wanna speak on this matter? Any comments before we make a motion? Gotta address a motion to this item. Alright, someone like to make a motion?
I move we approve MP twenty dash eleven with, I think it's two conditions, with condition one amended as.
Actually, that's what goofed me up, it's twenty one. Of course, i- is it?
Item twenty one. It's item twenty one, yes.
So the number is twenty one?
Correct, yes.
Alright, thank you, I didn't mean to interrupt, but that's, I called it MP twenty and Cody corrected me rightfully.
Okay, anyway, with two conditions with amendment one corrected as stated by staff.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, MP two zero dash one one. Um, and you are dropping that line with the four hundred and fifty seven from the one? And you're, and it would have two conditions then, correct, Karen?
Yeah, Blackhawk pit, you're changing.
The Blackhawk quarry and the wording on the. The wording that I stated earlier will be included in there.
You'll have to revise that to eliminate that four fifty seven, and I understood that. Anyone wanna comment from the audience, from the board, from the commission? Hearing none or in favor of the motion, it's signified by saying aye. Posed, motion carried, thank you. Are you handling the remainder of the meeting, Cody?
I believe so.
Looks like you're the only solo left. Um, I guess I'm first, executive session will not be necessary today. I'm the board.
Uh, so Cody's a good planner, planner, uh, county board report, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the May twenty first, twenty twenty four. Um, planning commission meeting, uh, that included the vacation home residence ordinance that was approved.
And I had a little typo, it's supposed to be the May thirteenth. Yeah, the twenty first was the board of commissioners meeting.
Alright, items from public, we lost their public, they're disappointed, they don't wanna go after it, items from the staff.
I wasn't told of any.
I only had one item from the membership, and then we certainly, if you have others, bring them up, I would like to see. Everybody knows this sign ordinance was a real thorn in my side over the years. And you guys did a great job passing that thing, I'm I'm tickled to death, I'm tickled to death with the department that they stepped forward and corrected that. So we don't have these major signs put along our highways and byways. Um, but just in case it would happen. If somebody wasn't here, it'd be nice to review these on a, at least two meeting basis before we send them forward to the commissioner. So if we have a commissioner that's uh, missing, and it is a particular thing that they've received a lot of comment from their. Their own citizens and and citizens of the county that you have an opportunity to do so, but when I saw that was on there, I just. The, even the vacation home rental didn't bother me as much as seeing that sign ordinance on there, but the planning department took care of the problem, thank you. And I wanna get you off the hot seat, I think the citizens expect us to review these ordinance after you write them up. Um, I, we all get phone calls about it, uh, happiness and unhappiness, so that's all I have to say, anything else from the membership? Yep, chair to address the motion adjourned.
So moved, second.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Posed, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.